It's my pleasure to call to order the State Board of Education. We're going to do a roll call. We have, John Bacon is not here. He's out of the state and will not be with us. And Steve Roberts is online here. Good morning, Steve.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Before we start our meeting, I would like to take a privilege of recognizing that school will be beginning this week. There are some schools who have already in session. And there are teachers returning. Teachers, administrators, paras, support staff, clerical staff, classified staff are all coming back to serve the needs and the future of our students. It's a great time. If there's one time of year that I miss as an educator, it's this time of energy and optimism that is part of the schools. I'm reminded at this time, especially because of an event in my life last week. I was at New York last week at this time, actually traveling to New York to go see a New York Yankee game. Now, there's a fun time. But part of that trip was also to visit with a teacher who was probably the most influential person in my life, Pat McGonigal, who is a retired teacher. Taught for almost 50 years on Long Island. I was in his first class in 1963. I had not seen him since 1973. And Pat has been an inspiration and obviously a big part of my life. And I have told or asked people across the state during my tenure as an educator, as well as my tenure now as a board member, to go and thank those teachers or that teacher who made a significant impact on your life. So as school begins this year, I'm reminded through my meeting with Pat last week, three hours of talking to him, reminiscing about, you know, school and his start and his career as well, that the influence that teachers and school personnel have on students is absolutely amazing. It's not just about writing, math, reading. It's who they help us become and how they change our stars in our future. I would not be here today if it was not for Pat McGonigal. And I think that every one of us across the state could tell the same or similar story of a teacher who went out of their way, who made a difference. And yes, Matt, Pat was my English teacher, and he was almost my basketball coach, except he cut me. What was that? Well, a new talent. You know, but that these teachers make such a pivotal and great impact on our lives. So for those folks that are out there that are beginning the school year, thank you. Thank you for changing lives. Thank you for being the Pat McGonigals in the state of Kansas. Thank you. It's my pleasure at this time to begin our meeting with the reading of the mission statement. The mission of the Kansas State Board of Education is to prepare Kansas students for lifelong success through rigorous quality academic instruction, career training, and character development according to each student's gifts and talents. Our vision is for Kansas to lead the world in the success of each student. If you please join me now in a moment of silence, and as we are reflecting at this time, please think about those teachers and school personnel throughout our school districts who make a difference in the lives of students, not just for today, but well into their future. Thank you. If you please stand and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. As we move forward, the first item I'd like to deal with is we need to amend our agenda. And I'm going to turn it over to Mark to explain what we're doing here as part of our amending the agenda for today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I asked that the board consider amending the agenda because on the agenda as circulated at item 13 was to act on the recommendation of the Professional Practices Commission regarding the licensee McGary. In your handout, your folder, there's a letter dated August 2nd, 2016 from Mr. McGary's attorney, Ted Liktig, and they have requested an oral argument. Given the time issues involved, I reached agreement with Mr. Liktig that the board would not consider the merits of the McGary case today, but instead would consider the request for oral argument and defer. And so that's why I'm asking that the board would modify that agenda. And just for clarification, the McGary matter, the licensure issue on the merits would not be considered on item 13. I'm asking that the board would only consider the request for oral argument that his attorney submitted at that time.
And that is, and that case is the only case today?
That is.
That would have been, we would have taken action.
That is correct. And so I'm asking that an action item be substituted for an action item.
Related to the same case?
That's correct.
Okay. Do I have a motion to do that? Moved by Kathy Bush, seconded by Ken Willard. Any further discussion? Deena?
So are we deferring action until after we hear from the attorney? Is that what we're doing?
Well, there's two parts. Today, all you would be doing is deciding whether or not the board exercises its discretion and accepts the request for oral argument. And then regardless of what the decision is on that, the McGary case would be pushed back until the September agenda.
Okay.
So to answer your question from this point of view, we are deferring any action on the PPC recommendation. We are then going to have an action of whether the board wishes to hear from the lawyer at the September meeting. Okay. So we have, Kathy Bush?
Just for further clarification, so what we are discussing this afternoon, we are not by voting on this right now saying we're going to hear action, but we are voting to discuss it this afternoon on whether or not
Correct.
We're going to hear action.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes. Further discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. Those who are in favor of amending the agenda as presented, please signify by raising your right hand. Steve? Yes or no on amending the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, thank you very much. So that is 9-0. Okay. Thank you very much. Our next item is to approve the minutes as presented from the July State Board meeting. I may have a motion to approve the minutes. Moved by Deena Horst, seconded by Jim Porter. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the July meeting, please signify by raising your right hand. Those opposed, same sign. Steve, how do you vote?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. It's a 9-0 on approving the minutes. Okay. I'm going to go back. Mark, just for a moment. We amended the agenda, but we didn't approve the agenda. Okay? That's true. Deena Horst moves that we approve the agenda as amended, seconded by Carolyn Campbell. All those in favor of approving the agenda as amended, please signify by raising the right hand. Steve, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes 9-0. Thank you very much. Glad I caught that. Okay. Our next item on our agenda is our report from our commissioner, Dr. Watson. Welcome.
Thank you. Welcome to everyone. It's good to see everyone. As Jim mentioned, busy time. It's the start of school, and we actually do have some schools in session already. And we have some where the teachers have yet to come back, and we'll have some that start after Labor Day. So it's a month-long transition to the start of the school year, and it's always such an exciting time. So I want to share several things with you today to kind of illustrate some of the things that we've been doing and talking about across the state. First of all, we focus a great deal on the five outcomes. And we're going to be talking about one of those in depth tomorrow, kindergarten readiness. But I don't want us to forget the five parts of a definition of a successful high school graduate, which then the outcomes are intended to help measure. Because I think sometimes these five areas can help illustrate for schools, what are the areas I should be focused on in order to achieve those outcomes of high graduation rate or high post-secondary completion. And, you know, Janet, I was reminded again this week where one of the places I was at said, "So we don't have to work on academics." No. We have to work on academics, and in some cases, we have to work even more on academics because our students aren't academically prepared. But what Kansas has told us is just balance that out. Make sure they're technically prepared, employability prepared, civic engagement, and those five are equal in its look. And the cognitive side of this, while yes can be measured sometimes on a test, really speak to a deeper level of being able to problem solve and do things, and even what we may think is academic preparation. So like all of you know, sometimes you believe you say you have said things in certain ways, and you've been clear, and then you realize, maybe we have, I haven't, or maybe, you know, we haven't. So I'm using this more and more, along with the outcomes, your definition of what a successful high school graduate is, because those five areas, along with the five board outcomes, are really what's driving our work, and that it's a balance of those things. And so with that, if you're out speaking with teachers here as we get started, I would tell you, and we've shared this with you, that one good way to get a rousing ovation, in fact, I was recently, I got a standing ovation in the middle of what I was talking about when I said, "We're going to cut the state assessment summative exam down 60% by session." And I mean, everyone erupted. So I want to give great kudos to Brad, but especially to Scott Smith and Beth Foltz. They worked really hard on listening to the field. And, you know, this is the summative exam in math, English, language arts, and science. And by shrinking that, we'll still get the results that we need, both for accountability and to help students' families know where kids are academically. But we're going to be able to really focus on those interim or benchmark assessments where every six to nine weeks, we can help students and schools monitor their academic progress. So again, I always show that if you would like that, you know, in a little PowerPoint for if you're out talking to people, especially teachers, I can just tell you that this slide is always a hit. It's always important. I thought I would take you through what I've been working on with staff as I go out. And really, what does graduation rate really mean? And what does post-secondary completion really mean? And you have to look at those two things in combination. Because if you have a high graduation rate, but a really low post-secondary attendance or completion, we're really missing the mark. And if you invert that, we are. So we have an aspirational goal of 100% of kids graduating from high school. And I always use the word aspirational, Jim, because I don't want people to think we're chasing an AYP curve again, where we're going to do some things like, "Well, I'll just graduate you today," you know, without any skills. No, these are, we have to graduate kids with skills, but that's our aspirational goal. And as you know, we've talked about this, Kansas is one of the highest-ranking states in terms of graduation in the country. And we've actually increased 3% over the last five years from '83 to '86. With students with disabilities, we're either number two or number three. It kind of fluctuates year by year in the percent of students graduating high school. And yet, all of us know that '86 isn't good enough. And it's not because we can beat Massachusetts, which we do, by the way. Just point that out, because a lot of people think they're number one in everything. It's because we can't afford, as a nation, as a society, to have students that do not graduate high school. And as Jim talked about, going back and visiting the teacher that impacted his life, we know that really by focusing on each student, we can raise this number. So it's not a number that we have to just artificially inflate. It's about engaging families and kids in the deep conversations about what it is that will help change their life. But I wanted to illustrate for you what this really means as we talk about every kid having something post-high school. So think about this. As we start school, we're going to have some freshmen come into school. And for high school teachers, I'm an ex-high school teacher. You know, if you're elementary, the kindergartners, they're running down the hall, the backpacks are flopping, right? And the moms are crying. It's a terrifying time. Middle school, the moms are really crying. Now the kids are really, but high school, for high school teachers, it's those, "Oh, here come the freshmen." Because, you know, for the high school staff, that's where they see the beginning of the youngsters. So let's imagine that 100 students were starting a freshman class at any of our high schools this fall. All right? Here they are. And we know four years from now, on average, these are all averages, Kansas High School, 86 of them will graduate. 14 of them will not. And those 14 will have a difficult time making it to the middle class. They just will. And they drop out for a variety of reasons. But if you go to a lot of the alternative schools in Kansas, what they will tell you is while they may be academically behind, and most are, they're academically behind not because they can't do academics, because they have some social-emotional issues getting in the way, whether that, a whole host of reasons. But 14 of those students are going to see graduation. And then if we think about the graduating class then, which would be four years from now, so we'd be talking about class of 2021, those 86 kids, by the statistics we have today, 78% of that graduating class are going to go on either a welding certificate, they're going to go on to Cali County Community College, they're going to go on to Wichita State, they're going to go somewhere. And so some additional number of kids drop off that aren't going to go on to post-secondary. And then of the ones that go on to post-secondary, when we take a look at them 16 months later and say, "Well, who's graduated? Who's made it through their diesel mechanics program? Or who's still in school, right? Still working on that pre-pharmacy?" We find 63% of the kids that started that journey still are. And so we lose some more that never complete. Those are the kids, if you're in school, been in school, you know, they say, "I'm going somewhere." And then by Christmas, they're home. Those are the kids. And so what started out as the freshman class and 16, 17 of 100 kids, by the time we get to 2022, if nothing changes, the averages we have now, 42 of those will complete any form of post-secondary education. 42 of the 100. Now, that's just average statistics. And by the way, I want to again point out, we're one of the best in the country. And yet, 71% of the job market in our state demands something past high school. Just think of that. And Ken sent me an article, and it's certainly true. We talk about the middle class a lot because all of you know, if you can't raise a family and do what you need to do, life becomes a real struggle. But we also, education's also about well-roundedness and civic engagement and helping people feel successful. It's not just about the job market. So this is what we're trying to impact, and so is K-BOR. We're trying to impact this, that the number of kids graduating high school and going on to be successful in whatever they choose post-secondary, we would see. So we really want to raise this, we want to double this number. And we'd like to be in the 80s. And that's our challenge going forward. It's just how do we help these kids that, these 42, by the way, and I've been as guilty of this as anyone in my career, we love to tell the stories about these 42, because they're wonderful stories to tell of the successes of these kids. But I just want you to keep in mind the challenges that we have in a state that traditionally ranks in the top 10 in these measures. We still have challenges, and that's why when you wear this pin and you tell the story, Jim, like you did today, this is about every child. The focus on every child and every parent and family. And when we do that, and we really invest, and I'm hearing schools across our state saying, "We're ready to get started on that. We'll see this move." So it's not just about moving the number. Finally, I want to give you some numbers. 61. Does that number mean anything to anyone? It's a current number, so it's not, I'm not asking you for a historical number. Some of you have recently been to Yankee Stadium, may start giving me some historical baseball numbers or something. Thank you. That's what happens when you get to go on Alaskan cruise for vacation. You now know it's one number above 60. This is the number of new superintendent positions in Kansas. 61 superintendents starting this year in new position out of 280, 286 school districts, but six are being shared. Last year, there were 52 changes. And you don't have to look very far for what I call the corridor right here. You could just start, and you could say in the last two years, two to three years, you've got Spring Hill, and you've got De Soto, and you've got Eftong and Oxy, and you have Alatha, and Blue Valley, and Emporia, and Manhattan, and Topeka Seaman, and Washburn Rural, and Topeka 501. I'm going to forget some, just in this area right here.
Okay. Are those new positions or are those brand-new superintendents?
New to the position.
New to the position.
Yeah. But let me tell you that there are a handful of these 61 that will be a K-12 principal superintendent that were teachers a year ago. And maybe, maybe this is my age. Kathy, this is my age on this one. But when I saw that some of them were graduating high school in '06 and '07, and now today they're going to be a superintendent, that's a quick ascension. And I will tell you that in my generation, you tended to go assistant principal, principal, maybe even central office superintendent. You may have migrated west and moved east, and they're all, the ascension is happening quicker, more quickly. And so these 61, coupled with the 52 we had last year, create some leadership challenges and opportunities for us. And so I was telling Sally, I was out at Sublet just talking about leadership, and I had a text this morning from one of these 61 saying, "Can you call me? I have a really difficult board member, and I seem to remember you had some at first." No. And just saying, "Can we talk? Just can we talk?" And this is someone who's a veteran superintendent, but changing positions, and the culture's different. I want to give you another number. I'm going to give you three numbers this morning. 177. That's the number of assistant principals that are new to their position. And we would think most of these are new, and we would think that would be a beginning position. But again, I'm showing you the leadership. And finally, the number of principals. And so when I talk to Rick Dole, my good friend who's now at Kelly, working on principal and superintendent leadership, you know, mentoring, what has to happen in our state as we think about doing this work together is supporting people that today, 216, 177, and 61. I can tell you today, they're worried about management functions of how they're going to survive this first couple of months. I got to have a speech ready, right? I got a faculty meeting coming up. I got to have a bus schedule. I got to have a lunch schedule ready to go. Those are the things that they're thinking about today. And our challenge as we help them move forward with our vision to help every child is help them with those management functions so they can move to the leadership. And it won't happen overnight, just like our vision won't happen overnight. This is a sustained part of what I have to be committed to. I think you have to be committed, our service centers, Kelly. We're going to have a responsibility, because as you heard last time with the teacher vacancy report, Jim and I talked about this yesterday, we don't have a grain of our staff. We have a greening. We have a greening of our staff. We have a lot of new people, and we'll have to help them and mentor them through these next several years as we go forward. So an exciting time. But I just wanted to point out, one of the challenges that we're going to have is how do we help 61 new superintendents in positions or 216 new principals in positions, and knowing that we have limited resources to do that all across the state. So I encourage you to reach out within your area to those people, just to say, "Glad you're here. Glad that you know that you took on this responsibility. Let us know how we can help." And understand that many of them are going to be even scared to admit that they need help. When I was out at Sublet, I said, "One of the things that, especially true for superintendents, when those 61 are just applying for new jobs." And when that happens, and all of you know, if you apply for a job, your ego has to get pretty big, you know? And then what's hard is reining that ego in to say, "I don't know that I know what to do in this situation," and reaching out and then helping each other. It's a really, superintendency and principal can be a lonely job at times where you think everyone's looking to you for the answers, and how do you share that? So I wanted to just share those kind of different things with you this morning, let you know kind of, again, our progression and how we're looking at the changes to come forth. Sally?
I don't know if I wrote this down wrong. 177 assistant principals?
Assistant principal. Assistant principals. Yes. Again, those are not all new. They're new to their position.
Okay. And how many did you say that are sharing positions?
Well, there are a handful that are K-12 superintendents that were teaching last year.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I would, that is a tremendous job to be a K-12 superintendent. You know, you're thinking right now, "I got to make sure my football schedule's lined out, so I don't have two buses on a road somewhere crossing each other." I mean, you've got, you're, I mean, anyone's been a high school principal, you're dealing with, right now, with a lot of management issues. And then, by the way, you know, we're throwing budget at you and extraordinary needs, and I appreciate those that served on that. There's a lot of change happening at the same time they're trying to simulate this. So I just appreciate your work as you're out there, and you're out in schools over the next several weeks. Just reach out to them, thank them, you know, just as you thank the teachers and say, "We welcome your leadership, and we look forward to working with you to enhance it." Thank you.
I would remind the board that in your packet is some information about the council of superintendents and when their meetings are, as well as USA regional meetings. Those are opportunities to interact with superintendents in those in the area, as well as at your service centers. They have each month meetings that I know many of you go to. So there are ways, you know, structurally that are there for us. But if you have a phone call, it would be nice, you know, just a friendly hello. Janet Waugh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Randy, are all the positions filled? Are there anything still vacant?
Well, we have some teachers vacancies, a fair number. And as mentioned, it really is, those are focused in three areas. Southwestern Kansas, a little bit in the Kansas City area. Kansas City area, a little bit in the Wichita area. As far as I know, the leadership positions have been filled, are filled right now. I may, my phone may be buzzing by Jay Bowie telling me I missed something.
Okay, is the shortage of teachers larger this year than it was last year?
I don't, we don't have that data yet. We'll get that as we start the year and get those reports in. It, it looks like it's about the same, though.
Doesn't?
Just anecdotally.
Okay, thank you.
So.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Good information as we start the year. Oh, I'm sorry, Sally Cobble?
These states to remember, the council of superintendents and everything. I get invited to the service center, one service center. I don't know, how free are we to go to these on our own? I've always felt like I needed to be invited to go.
To the council of superintendents?
Yeah.
It, it is their, it is their group, so you'd want to be invited, or at least acknowledge that to the chair that, that you're going to be coming. Corey Gibson was the chair last year, and I'm trying to remember who the chair is for this year, and I'm drawing a blank, but Dale would know. And Sally, they generally welcome you with open arms, but because it is, it's, it's a meeting for them, just acknowledgement that you would like to come and be a part of it, just so they know.
Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is Citizens Open Forum. I now declare the Citizens Open Forum for the Kansas State Board of Education Meeting to be opened at ten-thirty-three AM. The State Board provides this opportunity for students to share, opportunity for citizens to share views about topics of interest or issues currently being considered by the State Board. The State Board asks that speakers identify themselves by name and the name of the group they represent if applicable. The State Board also asks that each speaker focus their remarks on issues or topics. Personal attacks will not be tolerated. Each speaker shall be limited to three minutes. Any board questions will be for clarification only. Our first speaker is Dr. John Schrock from...
Emporia State.
Oh, Emporia State.
This is one of the few times I can say I'm not speaking for myself anyway. There are teachers that go around, a journal sheet, and an old...
A science teacher sheet as well. And incidentally, teachers do live on in their students. There have been times I've been before the board to try to convince you of something, and I've succeeded, and as I walk away, I know that Egbert would have been proud of me. He was my teacher. He died in seventy-five, but we'll see whether he's proud of me today as I try to convince you in certain areas. Okay, the Pew Trust...
Keep us updated if you guys come back.
The Pew Trust does surveys, and they have found that schoolchildren spend over seven hours a day on screens, from this little thing to TVs to video games to who knows what. That's over seven hours a day, okay? But less than one-half hour per week in the wild, in a park, out in the backyard, in a garden. And teachers, I've had, we do surveys of what's going on in the classroom. Biology teachers' field trips have been dramatically curtailed, their labs have been dramatically curtailed in the last fifteen years because it's all about teaching to the test, and those things are not on the test. So we have a conference coming up. It's a Saturday before your next meeting, September tenth, and this mailing went out to the teachers that are coming back, as you hear. And I have the head of law enforcement for wildlife and parks explaining how collecting permits and, and other field trip things work for teachers. In addition, I have the Hazmet, two speakers from health and environment, and they'll explain about the chemicals in the back room, they shouldn't go down the sink anymore, and how that's supposed to work. Animal care and use for this area will be coming and speaking. Incidentally, I also have community college, this went out to community college and university teachers as well. KBT is, is not just K-12. Okay, so that conference is coming up, and, and also drug enforcement is in to answer questions on that, as well as the teachers having some presentations as well. Okay, that is a meeting, and I appreciate the help the commissioners provided by communicating with superintendents. I want to move then to a second thing that actually is related, and that is a report you're going to approve this afternoon, and that is the, what to do about the teacher shortage. And on page fifteen in the intermediate recommendations for the State Board of Ed is item number four, KSDE, on comprehensive science endorsements. How wonderful that's going to be. Comprehensive, sounds good. Okay, we are one of eleven states that trains in biology or chemistry or physics or earth science, and you can take two of those and take more time. So comprehensive, if you take our programs in, that's going to take six to six and a half years to get through. That's not what they're talking about. It's a wrong word. What they're talking about is one-size-fits-all science teachers. They only get maybe two or three courses in biology, one or two in physics, one or two in chemistry, one or two in earth science. That's what we train in Kansas, middle school science teachers to do. That's watered down. That's like saying we have a shortage of medical doctors, so therefore we're going to start training medical doctors with the amount of training that you give a nurse. Solves your problem on paper, but it doesn't solve your problem. In fact, it walks backwards in time to an earlier age, and you have teachers that don't know what they're talking about. In fact, I sent the announcements that are going out for this, this meeting to the high school teachers, but not the middle school teachers because they won't know enough to ask the questions and understand what's going on in here if we use this. If you leave this line in when you approve it, you're given tacit approval to them to continue on and work on that, moving to that. We defeated this back under redesign. We should not go that direction. If you take it out, you send the message that you are for strong teacher preparation in the science teaching. Right on time. Dr. Egbert would be proud of me.
Thank you very much. I would call the board's attention to written comment that was submitted by the Kansas Association for the Education of Young Children. It's in your folder. These are comments that they wanted, they were unable to be here today, that they wanted you to be aware of. Otherwise, I believe that is the only, the only public comments we have today. The State Board's Citizen Open Forum is closed at eleven-thirty-eight AM. We would like to thank our speakers for sharing their views to the board. The State Board will determine if any of the issues should be addressed as an agenda item at a future meeting. The next item on our agenda is a report from the Education Fellows on summer trainings at school districts. This program began this spring, and I want to, before we even begin, thank our fellows, all excellent and outstanding teachers and administrators that have gone around, and these three teams of teachers representing the Kansas Teacher of the Year Program. They conducted these one-day workshops around the state. Today, they're going to present to us an overview of their summer work and are available for questions. So Randy, you're going to introduce the team.
I am.
Are they all here?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to ask, are you all here?
They're all here.
They're, they're making their way. Diane's making her way to get, get everything launched, and Tiffany's here. Are we waiting for anyone else?
I know, we're a little ahead of agenda.
Do you think, you think we're good? I think we'll want to take a break afterwards because they, because you don't want a photo op with these young people. So I have a teacher advisor board, and, and these people said on this, along with some other people, and we were talking about, and I don't even remember which one of you brought it up, but someone said, "You know, you, you're on the K-Toy team, and it's this extraordinary opportunity, and then you're not on the K-Toy team anymore, and then we have a new K-Toy team." And, and I think collectively, you said, "Please use us, do something with us. We want to serve again. We want to be a part." And so I needed some money, you know, we needed some money to do this, and so, you know, the keeper of the money is Dale Dennis. So I went to Dale and said, "You know, I really need some money." How much money? Hundred thousand dollars. I think I need a hundred thousand dollars so we can do some work this summer to enhance the board's mission. Ah, and we've been cut, been cut thirty percent over the last few years, so we're talking, I don't know where we're going to get it. He goes, "Now, who's going to do this?" I said, "Well, you know, we got these teachers, you know, former K-Toy, for great teachers, they're, they're distinguished along the way." He was on it because you know Dale, he loves you guys. He, he, he said, "We've got to make this happen." So we put together some outstanding teachers, a representative sample, the outstanding teachers in Kansas, and then said to school districts, "If you want these people to come out and talk about the board outcomes and goals and spend a day with you at no charge, just sign up." And the first school district to do so was Wesken, Kansas. And, and there's a couple of places in Kansas, maybe three that I come to mind, that if you're in Elkhart or Wesken or St. Francis, no one argues of whether you're in western Kansas. You're truly in western Kansas. And so they've been everywhere, from the northeast corner to the southeast to the west. They've been working in teams of three, and it's, it's, it's just been a joy to watch their work. The, the response that we received from the school districts has just been tremendous everywhere they've been, and they're going to share with you, and I can't wait to hear it because they've been sharing with me, you know, every time they go out. But we're truly honored that you took on this challenge this summer, and we hope, you know, that it was beneficial for you guys because we know it was beneficial for the school districts that you visited. So who's leading off?
Well, Team One's going to kick off first.
Okay, all right, thanks, Diane. And go ahead and introduce yourselves and, you know, say what you're supposed to be doing today, Jerry and Brandy, instead of, you know, being here. You have real jobs, right? Real teaching jobs with kids and...
Just minor things like getting my room ready, figuring out what I'm going to do this year, little things like that.
So the person on our team that couldn't be here today is Laura Gilchrist, and she is an instructional coach in Turner, and so they're having their convocation today. So she is, but she's here in spirit, and she was great in really teaching the district, or districts about how to stay connected. And then my name is Brandy Leggett, and I am an instructional coach in Shawnee Mission School District.
And my name is Jerry Powers, and I am an elementary reading specialist at Prairie Ridge Elementary in the DeSoto School District. So we're going to share with you a little bit, we counted up today, it's really fun when you start to work with, with a team of people because you start to see their strengths and your weaknesses and your strengths, and there were, and one thing, Brandy, she sat out in the car coming in, and she rattled off all eleven places we've visited. I'm like, "I don't, I don't even remember three." And so we always relied on her to be the detail person. She was really great at that, so...
So coming up with six words, six words to describe our experience is just dedicated educators eager to redesign learning. So every place that we went, when they heard about the outcomes, they're eager to, "How can we look to redesign? How can we look at what we're doing well and make it better?" And things that we, that they were areas that they can improve in, they were already thinking outside of the box, and just when we were there, it was just things of, "What can we do differently that's been different than maybe the traditional things that have happened throughout the, over time?" And so it was just a lot of districts willing to be eager. And so one of our big highlights was breakout EDU, and this was something that, it's like the breakout rooms, but it's with a box, and they worked to be able to take out and open the boxes with locks and clues and working together. And so the first districts that we went to, we were really focusing on social and emotional, and when we talked to them, everyone was talking to us about, "Well, this is how we reward students. This is how we recognize them." And we were thinking, "How can they see the non-academic skills and tie those into that it's not something different, but it's a part of what's happening in the learning?" So we designed a breakout EDU where the, they were able to work on what they learned about the outcomes that day and actually experience it with as themselves, as the students were. And so we saw a lot of high engagement, the content review of them, passion coming out with them, and that there was a lot of reflection at the end that they were willing to take the boxes, and people were ordering them, and we've gotten emails about, "This is what we're going to do with the students. The students can do this." So we were just happy to see how, they were able to see how the social emotional could be tied in.
And then as, as we were reflecting on the schools that we visited, I think the one that stood out the most to me was Hart Springs because we've talked a lot about success for every child, and that a system is only as good as how well it meets the needs of individual children. Well, at this school, we began to see just how important that is to have a system that is very flexible because success is very different at this school. This is a residential facility for children with autism, and they range from about six years old up through twenty-one, and many of them there are non-verbal. So as we were driving down, we thought, "High school graduation rate, you know, post-secondary, what?" As we're researching this facility, we're thinking, "What does this mean for them? And how can we make our presentation relevant for them?" And so what we began to see is that this is why a flexible system is so important. These kids are there because of behaviors, most of them, and so although a few may go on to traditional post-secondary, for many of them, it's being able to spend a night in a hotel with their parents. That's success. Being at a point where their behavior is enough under control that they can live successfully in a group home, that is success for them. And so it made us really think that every child is unique, and that's, nowhere was that more evident than at this building. And yet, they have a lot of hope. These people, as we walked around, they said, "Please let us show you what we do with these kids. Please let us share with you." And we walked in, and there was this one student who's, he was around, he's about twenty, I think, and he's non-verbal, but his art skills were phenomenal. We sat there and watched him draw, and what he is doing is marketing his artwork. And so he does things like this, and he's selling these, he's making money, and the rest of the students there, they helped to put these together. And I thought, you know, that takes individuals who at their very core, their belief system is, "We value every life." And I think that's what I began to see about these standards or these new outcomes we have, is at the very core, it's about valuing everybody's life. And that's what got me really excited, and I think that as we think about what we really experienced, we know that as educators, this is not an easy road we're going through right now. And education never is really easy. It's always a journey of trying to rethink what you're doing and analyze and try to figure out how to do it better. But what I learned at, at each one of these buildings and each one of these sites, and also, it really hit home with me at Hart Springs, is that at the core, educators believe that every life matters, and that's why these outcomes are just such a phenomenal way to go. So we want to thank you as Team One because, boy, we learned, we're a little exhausted, but it's a good exhausted because we learned a tremendous amount from other educators as we got this opportunity. So thank you.
Tell us they live in places.
She can. I had to write them down. If I don't have my phone, I don't remember. Go.
We went to Burlington, Remake, Hart Springs, Atchison, Piper, US, USA Conference, Smokey Hills, um...
Gerard.
Oh, yeah, Gerard, Yodora, and what was that?
There were two more. She told me them in the car. Wesken, how can we forget that? We got to fly to Wesken. That was it. That was fun.
Wesken and Remake.
That was a lot of fun.
Yes.
No, that wasn't, not the group.
Yeah.
Yes.
And many of these sites we went to, there were multiple districts there. So it covered a lot, it covered a lot of ground, mostly small districts, and so coming from districts that are a little bit larger gained a lot of respect and admiration for small towns in Kansas. That was a great eye-opening experience, and we, I, I loved that experience.
Well, I'm part of Team Two originally, but I have the pleasure of also getting to be part of Team One, and I figured it up. I traveled five trips with them, three trips with this team, and then two of all of us together, which is that picture you see right there is all of us together. So I have the benefit of having all of them as part of my team. And my name's Tiffany Richard, and I teach at Olathe East High School, and I teach biology and avid there.
I'm Shelley Cranmer. I teach at Annover High School, and I'm a unrecognized Master Teacher of the Year, so I just want to put that out there, I'm not one. But I know Randy because he was my volleyball coach when I was a senior, so we'd known each other a long time, and I did not put that in there, but I should because we looked amazing back then and now.
We've seen the pictures, too. My name is Jeff Baxter. I teach JP Literature at Blue Valley West High School. I was at Leavenworth High School for twenty-eight years, and Sue Rippey was another member of our team. Sue's in the northeastern part of the country with her husband and... Sue's in the northeastern part of the country with her husband and family. And Sue just retired from Olathe Northwest. The, we spoke at a, presented at a wide diversity of schools, from very small rural schools to suburban schools to even several larger schools. And one of the things we enjoyed a lot, too, was that it wasn't just administrators. We spoke, worked with teachers and counselors and building principals and district administrators. And what struck us, working with all of them, was an audacious goal that Kansas educators embraced. We were surprised a little bit that no matter the size, the Kansas vision, the five outcomes were embraced by these teachers.
So, I'm going to share with you a little bit about our creating connections. And, you know, when we came out to each one of those buildings, one thing we noticed is, you know, there's a little bit of trepidation. Here we are coming out, giving them all this new information. They've already been working so hard. So, what we all tried to do was give everybody a voice. Because every school district has such a great story of what they have worked so hard to do for their students. And so, we were able to give them that voice and listen and give them that validation. One example is in Ness City, they have this really awesome thing called Godium. And I don't know if anybody's heard about it, but this Kevin Huddycutt came in and said, "Here's this great idea. I travel all over. I need a podium that can fit as a suitcase because I have to go to Australia with this thing. Can you create a podium that can have all these electrical outlets, carry all my stuff, and put it in a suitcase?" And so, those kids got together and planned and worked and prototyped, and they've created that. And on their wall, they now have a map of everywhere their Godium goes. So awesome. So awesome. So, we heard a lot of those really great stories like that. And so, we were able to give validation, just let them know how awesome their stories are. And then, also knowing we were coming back to you guys to share, that we were sharing with Randy every day, I think that really helped every school district feel like they were connected with the whole state. And so, with that, we were able to engage them. And that gave us the opportunity to then say, "Here's some of these awesome things you're doing. Where do you want to grow? Which one of these outcomes do you want to grow in?" And that really got them excited, and that really brought them to the idea that they were really committed to doing the outcomes and doing the best they can for all of their students.
So, we were supposed to reflect on what this summer meant to us. And I want to, mine was a selfish one. That's my daughter right there, Catherine, a couple of weeks ago. And down below there is where my daughter was a couple of months ago. That's how my summer started. And I wanted to show you her right now because it was a miracle. She's fine. But I was on the phone with her my last day of school, and that happened. And that's how my summer started. And so, I kind of want to use that as my analogy, as my, finishing my 25th year of teaching, that's how I felt. Kind of broken, hard year, hard last year. And Randy gave me this opportunity. And I thought, "I'm going to go with it." Finished 18th year at Andover, had the same principal. And this is not to beat him up. I thought he was a good principal. But I met my new principal in March, and I thought, "I'm going to stick around. I like this lady." And she introduced this book to us, "If you don't feed the teachers, they eat the students." And I thought, "Okay, I'll read that." And as I read through it, it just made me mad because I thought, "He never fed us." So, as I started this group and went to our first USA workshop in, at the Hyatt, I was almost there, and there was a car accident behind me. And I heard the noise that I heard on the phone. And I got there, and I was a total disaster. And Sue came up. She's hugging me. She's rubbing me. And I'm a department of one in Andover, so I'm used to working by myself. And my department head can be a real, you know, but I'm just not used to working with people. And she was, you know, hugging me, keeping me going. And I did not do well that day with my presentation because I was everywhere. And Jeff and Sue, they told me some suggestions. They weren't hard on me. They lifted me. They helped feed me that day. And every presentation after that, they helped feed me. And I worked with Brandy and Carmen and Meade, and I got something from them, too. They helped feed me every time I was out there. And when I got to work with Tiffany, I got some great ideas with her. And so, for me this summer, working with all these teachers and secondary teachers, that's what I put, "I would go with you guys in the secondary back there." No, they were in the front row, and they weren't pouting to be there. That's what I do at In Services. So, I got to sit and look at these people that were glad we were there. I mean, some of their gratitude, I'm like, "We just gave a presentation. Why are you so happy, you know? Why are you thanking us so much?" So, I really got to sit back and really reflect on what it means to be a teacher. And it's so hard for me to say because I used to say, when people, "Are you ready for school?" Well, I'm not dreading it. I'm looking forward to it. And I haven't said that in 25 years. And it's, it's hard to say. But I just want to thank Randy and everybody on the team for helping me because I'm looking forward to it. And my bottom picture there, since I'm talking about feeding the students, is I got to ride in the governor's plane. And many of my Facebook friends thought I hijacked it or stole it because I'm not really a fan. But those are the drawers because I snooped in all the drawers, and that was one of them. I want to thank the board for the opportunity because I got fed this summer, and I'm ready for a new year this year.
Do I push the button?
I'm the type person.
Oh, cool, cool. Sue Rippey sent me a little note she wanted me to share with you. And I think it kind of adds to what Shelley and Tiffany were saying. This is what she said. "It seemed that mostly we presented to smaller and more rural school districts, and even a private school, by the way. That being said, they were incredibly appreciative of the fact that we took the time to come and present the Kansas-Kan vision to them. They seemed to often feel isolated, but now they felt included and supported by KSDE. It proved to be a very positive PR for the entire department. And I thought that was just really a powerful thing that you should know." We talked a lot in our group about stretch goals. John Kennedy's statement about going to the moon in the decade of the '60s was a stretch goal. If you remember, no one thought that could happen until it did. Kansas-Kan's vision is a stretch goal. Stretch goals require you to think outside the box. You can't do things the way that you've always done them. And what we found as we worked with school districts, is they are willing to do that. They are willing to take that on. And it struck me, the last three or four presentations, my daughter was imminent with the birth of our first granddaughter. And was supposed to be born July 28th, which was one of our days of presentation. And so, I took a separate car. I had my phone ready to go to takeoff. And it didn't happen until August 1st, 5:15 in the morning. But what, but what it really struck me was, at the same time we're talking about the Kansas-Kan vision, and I'm having a brand-new granddaughter who will be in the class of 2034, this is the vision I want for her education. As a grandfather, caring about that little girl, this is the vision. It's for each student, not each school. Its focus is on what we can do for each student. And so, I'd really like to thank you and Randy for the opportunity of working on this. It was a great joy.
Well, thank you all very much for what you did. Oh, we have more.
Sorry. We'll hurry. We'll hurry.
No, you take your time. This is great.
All right. So, we are Team Three. I'm Diane Smokarowski, and I'm an instructional technology coach in the Andover District.
I'm Carmen Zeisler. I teach fourth, fifth grade loop in McPherson, Kansas.
And I'm Brandy McWilliams, and I teach English at the high school, ninth, 10th, and this year, a class within a class.
And we, we went on the road quite a bit and made some new friends across the state. Oh, okay. Missed something there. But okay, our, our piece this summer was what?
So, our words that we chose to kind of represent the summer was eye-opening, collaborative, creative, and never stop improving.
We thought, we thought about this quite a bit after our last event in Americas, Kansas. I really didn't know that existed before we went there. But talk about phenomenal people, just, just top-of-the-line, amazing educators. But this summer was eye-opening for us. As we worked with several of the higher people in administration and so forth, there is this misunderstanding that once you leave K-12, you've gone to the dark side. And I saw a blog post yesterday that was a principal, "Stop saying we're going to the dark side because we are people who love children as much as you." And that was a great experience for us to say, "Wow, admins really do amazing things." So, that was a big part for us. And how never stop improving is what we're seeing across. So, why don't you tell them a little bit about that?
Well, I kind of had the same vision when we came in with the principals and administrators and superintendents. And I thought, "Man, they're going to be disconnected. They're going to just hear it because, you know, Dr. Watson has said that we should come out, and, you know, you better jump on board on that." But that's not what I saw at all. I saw them rolling up their sleeves, reflecting, seeing what they have in place, what they could do better. And it just made all of our hearts, you know, hearts happy. I'm originally from Denver, Colorado, and I taught there for six years and been in Kansas for eight. And I love Kansas. I'm like a native here because of things like this. So, when we went and I saw what those administrators were doing and wanting to give to our kids and to our teachers, I thought, "I'm Kansas-Kan, but I'm Kansas proud." Because wow, the dedication and the love. And I love that. They, just like Jeff said, we're all about that one, you know, each individual experience for students. And I don't know how many times or if you've ever had a party in here, but when Jeff said that, I felt like we should be doing poppers and setting off fireworks and celebrating in here because it's about each kid. And man, I have, I kept telling Dr. Watson, "I'm the perfect person for this job because I have a kinder at elementary and a junior high kid. And I see this vision for them, and it makes me excited." And I think everybody was passionate and excited about it, too.
And we did some unorthodox experiment, experiments with our people. You'll see here them all sitting together, facing one another. That's called a pinwheel discussion. And basically, each person sitting has to take on a different perspective. One of them is a high school student who's getting ready to go into higher ed, but he doesn't know what school to go to. And the one next to him would be a parent who has a legacy at a school. And you've all seen where his mom says, "Well, grandma's gone here. We're all going to this same school." But it may not be the right fit for the child. The third position was a college counselor at a school saying, "We have every product that you could ever need." And the fourth one was a high school administrator who was really trying to be an advocate for the kid. And by giving them this opportunity to force perspectives and stay in those roles, it was an eye-opening experience about how do we help children once they leave K-12 and go on to higher ed for that post-secondary. It was a powerful piece, and it got people talking. We found that a lot of our district stops, that there seems to be a discommunication problem between K-12, higher ed, and, or not higher ed, but, well, I think that's a different topic. That there's this communication issue. And we found out through these experiences that they were all on the same page.
I also want to add, Diane, that, like, we also found, too, that realizing that these outcomes are for everybody. You know, I'm an elementary teacher, and the high school graduation rate is just as important to me as it is to the high school teachers. And so, we saw some eyes opening in response to the outcomes of, "We are all on board. Let's all work together to achieve these outcomes."
Exactly. I don't think any high school teacher or administrator was, "Oh, this is kindergarten readiness. I need to tune out." Because we realized that we're working together. That's a good point.
Explain the boxes.
Yeah. We did a really, we did this activity about a box. And you can't really see it, but on the Lowe's box underneath of it, it says, "Never Stop Improving." And that really was our goal for the day. And so, we posed questions. You know, the idea is that this is a box, but a box can be all kinds of things. If you think of a toddler with a box, they're going to think it's an aircraft or a car or a fort, all these different things. And that was the idea we were trying to get across. So, let's talk about, you know, all these different sides of the boxes and just pose different questions and just have discussion. And it was so exciting to see all of those post-it notes on the boxes because what that meant was they had all these different ideas. Either things that they were already doing or things that they wanted to do. And so, the more post-it notes, we were pretty excited.
And I know we're pushing over time, but these were some of the other things that we covered. And big takeaways were the idea of Genius Hour, getting kids a chance to be focused in inquiry on personal drives, virtual field trips, bringing in Skype opportunities, having community partnerships for service learning, and actually building a partnership between K-12 and higher ed. How can we get a conversation running between those levels? And what we'd like to see in the future, we've dreamed about this a little bit. We would really like to see the extension of this group. And we haven't talked to the other, so please don't let me take words for them. But we would like to see an opportunity for us to go out again next summer or even have regional summits where we can go talk to teachers specifically about how to do things like social-emotional learning. What do we know and how can we help each other? Purposeful networking between districts, we found that was very powerful. When they said, "Oh, you're doing what over there?" We could be taking that idea and share. And then, just whatever you want to see happen, we're glad to take on that rate. So, I hope that doesn't put too many words in your board. That's, that's what we have for you today.
Thanks for the opportunity. We learned a lot.
Well, thank you for your energy, your enthusiasm, and your dedication, not just to the students that you work with every day and the districts that you serve, but across our state and helping the teachers the way you have. Because Kansas-Kan vision starts here, but if the teachers don't buy it, it's going to stop there. So, your efforts, and Randy, thank you for coming up with this, and Dale for finding the resources to make it happen, is a huge and wonderful, and great start, wonderful start in terms of bringing this to the reality of the everyday teacher and the everyday classroom for the everyday student. You know, that Kansas-Kan, each student's very important. So, thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments by board members? Okay, Kathy Bush?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, thank you, guys. This was a great presentation. And you obviously did a lot of work and a lot of, a lot of miles this summer, but well worth it. I kind of want to ask two questions. My first one was, what surprised you that folks maybe didn't know? And I don't know if there's a consensus or if a few of you maybe saw some different things. So, was there anything that surprised you that, that folks across the state did not know?
You have an answer. I'll tell you what Shelley's answer is.
You're going to paraphrase, huh?
It surprised us how many people did not understand graduation rates. Okay, right? It just surprised us and how it was figured out and what that meant. Because when you look at that, you think, "Well, what can we do about that?" And I think one of the things that was interesting, I don't know if this was part of your genius, but beginning with kindergarten readiness and ending with social-emotional development, how each of those linked to the next one, almost in that order, to where it really formed a foundation. You can't do one of those without doing the others. And, and yet, at the bottom of it, and it was so interesting to me, at the bottom of that with the social-emotional, if you read the research right now, oh my gosh, that is where education ultimately needs to be. You want to talk about the success of each student? If you don't have that, it doesn't happen. And it was just really a power, I think it surprised us what some of the people didn't know about how you look at data.
Well, there was also a huge misunderstanding about the Board of Regents requirements. Many districts felt like, and you guys can pipe in here, they felt like, "Well, we can't really redesign school because everybody has to take four units of this and three units of that." And, and that's a hard thing for many of the, of the districts we've visited with to understand that if kid, we need to rethink that. Does, if every kid's not college-bound, I mean, we say that, but then we would hear some people say things like, "Well, but he's a smart kid, but he just wants to be a welder. I've tried to tell him." You're like, "Tried to tell him what? I mean, if that's what he wants to be, that's an honorable profession." So, it kind of was surprising to me that the misunderstanding, even among high school, of what constitutes successful high school graduation.
And my follow-up question, and you kind of answered this on your last slide, was, how do we continue this work? Because I think communication is a huge issue. And I don't care if it's to all of our districts and our teachers and our folks or even communicating, and you've just kind of addressed one of them. How do we communicate with other, instead of pre-K-12, pre-K-16? And how do we communicate more effectively with post-secondary on our end and with them also? So, you know, that was kind of my, you know, what are our next steps? Because I think we need to continue. And like I say, you kind of addressed some of that. So, you may have some other thoughts, but I would just end with, "Thank you so much." So you may have some other thoughts, but I would just end with, thank you so much for giving your time, because you obviously had a huge impact and able to get the word out. So really appreciate that.
It helps to have multiple groups in the same setting, because I'm sure that everybody would agree, once one group would share, the other, "Ooh, well, that's a great idea." Or they think, "I'd never thought about that." Or, "Hey, how about doing this?" There was lots of sharing. And I think as a teacher for a while, you can kind of feel isolated. I don't care if you're in Blue Valley or Hartford, you can kind of feel isolated, and it helps, I think. Our best presentations is when there were multiple groups, multiple groups there, and teachers, counselors, administrators, all over, because as you were saying, Jim, if teachers don't buy into this, you're going to have a hard time. And our best thing that places happen, where there were also teachers involved in these things.
And what was wonderful is the fact that by the end, we had heard so many stories, because every team shared every time, that we were able to say, when a school said, "Well, we're struggling with this IPS, how do you implement this?" And we were able to say, "Well, this school did it this way, and this one did it this way, and even though they're all the way up here at this point, here's the questions that they're asking." So it really gave us an opportunity to share with each district what was going on throughout the state. I think it had a lot of weight that we are classroom teachers who went out and had this conversation, because we are in the field with them, we can come with our own stories of what we're doing with students. That was a powerful piece. I think the next step is when we come back this fall for our advisory councilor, we sit and brainstorm and come up with things to share with him and go from there, bring Dale in, say, "Hey, you want to fund this?" We'll have some great opportunities to continue.
Because we do need to figure out how, it did surprise me that we spoke mostly to administrators. Because as a teacher, what we heard is that, "Well, we want to figure it out first, and then we'll bring in the teachers." I was like, "No, you need teachers in on the ground floor." And so that's what I would like us to brainstorm, is how do we, do we help that understanding of what leadership looks like, and bringing teachers in on the ground floor? Because that's where you get behind it.
Great idea. Great. Thank you.
Sally Cobble?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say thank you. You guys were awesome. I was a little jealous as you were flying in an airplane, and I was driving, you know, but I'll bite the bullet and suck it up, and that's what I do.
And wine.
And also.
And wine.
And also the shirt that they had.
Yes. I want those, I want, okay. Okay. Anyway, he doesn't want me to get wound up, is what he doesn't want. But I, you guys were just awesome. And I'd like to go back, Jerry, to what you said on, I really think that teachers, classroom teachers, doing this was a big deal. I'm an ex-teacher, and I've gone to so much professional development that I sat on the back row and thought, "Oh, man, how am I going to relate this to what I'm doing?" But the one thing I heard after, you guys, you guys went to the bathroom, and I went around and talked to everybody in the room, and so what I got to hear was that this was so beneficial, and they did not feel like they were wasting their time. And I think that says a lot for, and what you were doing, that they found it beneficial. I'd like to go back to the isolation of the teachers and what you said on that. So many of our rural schools do feel isolated because they're funding for professional development. They can't go get it anymore. They aren't, and the schools really made an effort to bring their faculty to this because they needed it so bad. I want to know if my assumption of what's going on is way out there or what. I felt like our vision is getting out into the schools, maybe not so much into the communities and what we're doing. But the vision is out there, but it's not at the teacher level yet. And I want to know if you're kind of going like that. Should I keep that assumption that we're not to the teacher level? And like many of you, this isn't going to make it if the teachers don't buy in. And to help schools come up and see that we don't need silos anymore, we need a totally different system, if the teachers don't buy into it, and if they can't see how they can do it, we're never going to get it. And so I really, really appreciated that. And anything that you can help Randy with to come up with that, I think would be beneficial to the board and all districts.
We were also trying to tell them, it needs to be a community buy-in as well, especially with the kindergarten readiness, because some of them, like, I was shocked, Emporia didn't even have a kindergarten roundup, it sounded like. They were, "We don't even know how to find our kindergarteners." And I was like, "Emporia, you're a big school."
Yes.
So we were talking about how community buy-in is also going to be extremely important. We were talking about getting the information out there. So not just the teachers, but the community as well needs to be on Kansas Can. I mean.
Well, and I think we have a long way to go there.
Right.
But we got to at least get the teachers talking about it, so they can talk to the parents and whatever. No, I'm right, I'm on that, as Randy will say. And so we have a lot of diversity across the state. We have somebody like Ness City, and we have somebody like Hugaton, and then I could name some others that are really far behind. And so I see the disparity and the difference. Thank you very much. Really enjoyed seeing you guys. And if he sends you out again, I hope you let me know, because that old gray car is still going. And I can drive the roads, and.
You do them what?
I can fly low. Thank you.
Yes, a question I have, how many sites did you actually visit?
We need to ask Penny that question. How many districts did we talk to, Penny?
And at some of these sites, there were multiple school districts at the sites as well. Yeah, and that's great, because not just that we're out there visiting with teachers and connecting, you know, which would have been great on any topic, you know, that enthusiastic and well-recognized and respected teachers as yourself are out there doing this. But to have the Kansas voice, the Kansas Can voice, you know, is tremendous, because one of the things we're trying to do is change the conversation. And when to change people's conversations doesn't happen because you have a big deal in which you talk to the legislature, you know? It happens because people-to-people talk, you know? And yes, we're a long ways from where we want to be, but we are closer than we were a year ago, you know? And your efforts, I think, have helped us leapfrog a lot of the efforts. We're further because of your efforts. You know, it's going to take, hopefully not to 2034, but hopefully the conversation in 2034 will be, I remember they did something back in 2016, you know? It doesn't happen overnight, but it happens because people will it, work it, and make it happen. And that's what you're doing, you know, even more, far more effectively than what we do. So thank you very much. I hope that we will, in fact, hear from you again regarding what you think we should be the next steps, but certainly this is a step that should be continued to be taken around the state, because we might have been to 35 sites, maybe had 55 or 60 school districts, but we still have more. And it's not that school districts, I don't like the word "behind," you know, not to be critical, but you know, it's, sometimes they're not aware of things that have happened, and their conversations are so often in their districts about amongst themselves. And, you know, so bringing people up to date, as they say in Joe Business, bringing up to date, and also changing the conversation from the woes to the future, and how bright it is. So you guys have been a chorus for that, and I appreciate it and thank you, and wish you well on the next year. Each one of you will be touching the lives of teachers in your building, as well as students in your building. And we know they're in good hands because of your efforts and your dedication. So thank you very much. Thank you. We appreciate you very much. We're going to take a short break here. It's 11:20, I think. And we would like to get a photo, but we'll come back at 11:30 to resume our agenda. So let's get a picture, and thank you very much again. Wonderful.
Thank you.
Okay. Might mention to Janet, to, Janet's here, so Carolyn is our MIA. Okay. The next item on our agenda is to act on the application of Freedonia for membership in the innovative districts. Last month, Freedonia presented what they were doing and their application, and it is our responsibility to, as the Kansas State Board of Education, to approve the application of Freedonia to join the Coalition of Innovative Districts. Let's see, Bill Mullins is here, as well as Brian Smith, you know, the superintendent of Freedonia. So the thing I'm looking for is a motion to approve or not approve the application of them, but before we do that, Janet, whoa.
No, I just did that to make sure you that I was on here.
Jim Porter?
Yeah, I just, I just need to make a clarification. I, of course, until 13 months ago was superintendent of this school district, and so I considered whether or not there was a conflict of interest. I didn't have anything to do with this process, so I do not perceive that there's a conflict of interest, and I'm going to support it.
Okay. Deana Horst?
I will move that the board approve the application of the Freedonia School District, USD 484, to be an innovative school district.
Which also means grant the authority for the district to operate as an innovative district.
Yes, all of that.
Working under the bylaws of the Coalition of Innovative Districts Board.
Amen.
Okay. Do I have a second? Second by Carolyn Campbell, discussion. Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor of accepting Freedonia, you know, as a member of, accepting your application, Freedonia, and granting it the authority for a district to operate as an innovative district, working within the bylaws of the Coalition of Innovative Districts Board. Please signify by raising your right hand. Steve, how do you vote?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes, those opposed, one, Sally Cobble, 8-1 vote. Freedonia is now a member of the coalition. Kathy Bush, you have a comment?
I'm supportive of the, of this, as I voted for, but I do have a question I like to ask the districts after this, because it just helps me understand. Are there some things within the procedures, guidelines, and such at KSDE that you think you need or you couldn't have done without your application? I'm trying to determine what roadblocks we still have that districts are coming up against. I know you indicated last time, one of the things you really wanted to do was get involved with this group to kind of help as far as processing ideas, that kind of thing, but are there still some roadblocks that as a state board we can work on that help you better do your job in your district that we can work on? I just, that helps me.
Brian, if you'd step up here to the mic, please. Thank you.
I think for right now, we're excited about the possibility of working with this coalition and become a, becoming a member. I think in a small school, and I think you guys are going to be dealing with this later in the agenda item, teacher shortages. I think Jim will probably attest, and everybody else that's been administrator, elementary applications were, used to get a whole stack of them. We had two positions still left to be filled, and we had to do some creativity within our current staff to fill those vacancies, one being having to bring back a retired teacher. And of course, we're going to deal with the surcharges, but, and then, of course, we're still looking on that, the career and tech ed side of things. Having an ag teacher that's gone through K-State and worked through the welding side of things, but if we want Freedonia to come back and be a top-notch welding program, let's get somebody in the field, because one of the businesses that we talked to said that, yes, they can go through your ag program and get taught the basic welds, but even when they go to Tulsa Welding School, they're going to have to come back, and we're going to free teach them. So let's get some of those experts from the field into the classroom and show those kids on the career and tech ed side what is needed to be successful quickly for them to be beneficial in their businesses. So the teacher licensure is always something that's going to be critical. And I heard the gentleman's comments about science earlier, but, again, we're focusing on our application piece, so just the career and tech ed side of things.
All right.
Those, that'll be the first one right away.
Okay, thank you.
Jim Porter?
Thank you. This is for Bill. First of all, congratulations. You made a comment that I really liked last month, when you talked about this was not about trying to find out what you could get out of, trying to find out what we can do together. And I want to follow up on what Kathy said. If you find, I see this as an opportunity for us to, for you to help us identify barriers, legitimate barriers that we control, and if there are any, I hope that you will continue to communicate with us, because I think that we should, if there are barriers to you, there are barriers to the other 180, 280 schools. And I think that we, we need to be breaking down barriers that keep us from being able to reach the needs of each student. So first of all, thank you for your comment from last month, and hopeful that we can be part of the partnership.
And we look forward to that. I want to kind of, as Bush talked off of your question, I think that's the thing where the whole shift is changing. I mean, we've, we came into it, the coalition, from my perspective, has been really focused on, you know, getting some waivers on a few things. And really what I'm hoping to do with the work this year by, you know, getting into some work sessions is, let's start expanding our thinking, okay? And then let's see what the barriers are, because we've kind of gone into it with, we think there's a barrier here with licensure, and so we worked on that quite a bit. And we knew we wanted to do something with testing, so we stayed on, focused on that. And so I think we've been focusing on those issues rather than being that real innovative and going out there and pushing and really trying to find out where those new barriers are. I know from Freedonia's application, one of them was related to the advanced ed, okay? And I think there's still lots of things that have to be worked out with the accreditation process. It may be that it's not a barrier when it's all said and done. I think this board and KSDE has done a wonderful job of responding to the things that the coalition has brought forward, okay? I think probably one of the next ones, just to kind of put it out there, you know, I know Kansas City, Kansas, one of the new initiatives they're putting in, and one of the things that we want to do at Marysville is, is offer more pathways, okay, for our students. And there could be some barriers there, I just don't know what they are. But I know that we want to push and be able to give more opportunities for our students for those individual plans of study. And so there may be some things, I kind of think there's going to be some things we run into in that direction. But with all the times that we come back and report to you, we definitely will be in touch with anything that we find that, that we could potentially approach as a barrier and try to overcome.
Well, thank you very much, and welcome Freedonia to the coalition. Got another meeting to go to. All right.
We'll do it. So, thank you.
We're looking forward to it, and Bill, I'm glad you mentioned that we're rethinking the coalition. I will commend the board and the coalition in working together to make things happen, because as, we believe that the board, if it's good for you, it's good for everybody. But we have a dialogue, and we have, you know, an opportunity to work together to help the entire state. So this has been a good journey, but the journey's taking a little different course right now. And I think Freedonia brings some real assets, you know, to the table for us. So thank you. Good deal.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. The next item on our agenda is to receive amendments to the Emergency Safety Intervention Regulations. Laura Jurgensen is here to lead us through that. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for having me. If you'll bear with me just a moment, I just want to put up a few slides to make this easier for you to see. You also should have an attachment to this board item, which is the proposed language. which is the proposed language. All right. Thank you for bearing with me just a moment. I'm happy to be in front of you today. You've seen me many times on this topic. But it is my hope that this is the most simple and straightforward agenda item I have ever brought you. So let's see how it goes.
We're looking forward to it.
All right. So the reason we're here today is that in 2015, as you all know, we now have statutes in our state on this topic. And what those statutes did was set up an Emergency Safety Intervention Task Force. And Jim Porter chaired that task force. And we came up with a number of recommendations. Well, all of those recommendations became law July 1, 2016, because of course, the 2016 legislature passed a bill that included those recommendations. So now that the statutes have changed, your regulations have to change. It's truly just as simple as that with one item that I'll draw out in a minute. And so all of those changes are just listed here. And so I won't go through those one by one. But you can, of course, see in your attachment that there were places that we needed to strike out language, because that's not in the statute anymore. There are places that we needed to add language. And we did that in underline, because now that's the language in the statute. And so it's as simple as the statute has changed, so your regulations have to change. And before I go on to the one other change, I'd be happy to answer questions about anything in this list, if anyone has a question.
Kathy Bush.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Could you, the written statement from medical provider, could you just explain that just a little bit?
Sure, no problem. So the, the language that Kathy is referring to, you can find over in 91-42-2 subsection C.
And you, you probably don't have any idea what page that is on our agenda.
Well, so on your attachment, that would be pages 46 and 47.
Thank you.
I believe.
That's helpful.
Sure. So what the statutes initially said is that seclusion could not be used with a student if this student had a certain mental or physical condition, that as a result of that condition and using seclusion, the student would be in mental or physical danger. So what the task force recommended was expanding that and saying both seclusion and restraint cannot be used if a licensed medical provider has given the school a written statement saying, you cannot use these interventions with this student because this student has X condition. And explaining some about that condition and proposing perhaps some alternatives to the use of these interventions. And so the goal of expanding it was both to include restraint, right? Because before, it was just seclusion. But then also to give the school some additional information. You know, why is the provider recommending this? Is there anything else that can be, be done in the event of an emergency? That was some of the thinking of the task force. And then also, it's indicated over here at the top of page 47 that even though there's this requirement, that emergency safety intervention not be used in this event, if the, the danger in not restraining, for example, would be greater, you can use the intervention. So the example we give in training is, say you have a statement on file for a student, and this student is about to sprint into traffic. You need to restrain the student as safely as possible, because the danger of running into traffic is greater. So that's just a simplified example we come up with. Does that help?
One item I was particularly glad to see was the extended information and definition and opportunities for secondary contacts.
Oh, and the parent notification.
Right. Because the way it was, it was actually a violation of FERPA. You know, and.
There were some confidentiality concerns.
Yes.
Yes.
You know, so now, that's clarified, and that is, it's much better. Took a lot of words to do it, but it's much better.
Yes.
Any other comments? Questions?
Well, the only other change, of course, besides these statutory changes, is a change that you all voted on at your May meeting. And you voted and indicated to KSDE staff that you wanted clarifying language related to physical escort and timeout.